Invitation will be provided by Commissioner Gilbert. The Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Howard Thompson. Please stand.
I'd just like for everybody to remember, it's been a year ago since Israel was attacked. And just keep them in your prayers. Sure do. Think about them quite often. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you give us, God. God, thank you for watching over this beautiful county, Lord. Watch over the folks up in eastern Tennessee and North Carolina, Georgia and Florida, the Lord that's been affected by this hurricane, God. God always asks you to lift them up and God, give them the help they need. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together as a group of men in this county to do business for the people. Lord, we just love you and we thank you and we praise you in your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Lute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I, before we start, I'd like to welcome the Dr. Cash from the Bradley County Board of Education. Mr. Bryson and Ms. Kason, members of the school board. Susan Willcutt also from the accounting department. And the director of the library, Chrisa Parks, welcome. And also Vice Chairman of the Republican Party, we're blessed to have Mr. Hunter Shamblin with us tonight. Remember when you're speaking to turn the red light on. And if you don't turn it off, it'll be hot when you're talking afterwards. The roll call, please.
Scott Gilbert.
Here.
Howard Thompson.
Here.
Bobby Goins.
Here.
Cindy Slater.
Here.
Tim Mason. Tommy Ledford.
Here.
Josh Rogers.
Here.
Bill Winters. Daniel Beatty.
Here.
Mike Hughes. Louis Alford.
Present.
Thomas Cry.
Here.
Malin Blake.
Here.
Denny Collins.
Here.
That's eleven present and three absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes. Looking for a motion. Commissioner Alfred, second by Commissioner Thompson. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
That's eleven in favor and three absent.
Thank you. Report from the county mayor, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Three or four things for you. First of all, you have a memo in front of you that needs to be spread in the minutes. This is where with the gambling tax, the law says we have to collect it in the general fund and then we trans, it can only be used for capital projects. So then we transfer it to the capital projects fund. And the auditors want a memo saying that we have done that. So that's what this memo does, if it could be made part of the minutes.
Put it, go ahead and put it in the minutes. Okay, doesn't need to be voted on.
Not unless someone has a, doesn't agree to it. The other thing is your letter from the comptroller that says review the budget and determine the projected revenues and other available funds are sufficient to meet anticipated expenditures. That letter from the comptroller's office also needs to be made part of the minutes. No objection.
Commissioner Goins, please.
What is a gambling tax? I mean, I know what gambling is, but I don't.
If you're a gambler, you pay a tax, believe it or not. I don't know that much about it, I don't gamble, but we did get.
Lottery?
No, it's, I think ball games.
If you were betting on the Alabama game, you lost a lot of money, but we got some tax money from you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Brings in about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And then the law says how it can be spent.
I know. But I didn't know what kind of, what kind of lottery it was, is what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't really know what it, tax and what's not taxed, only just the gambling tax is all I know.
I didn't know we, I didn't know we gambled in Bradley County.
All right, the third thing I have, a resolution that was passed around a minute ago. We were asked to take down the hill at the fire department on Menace Road and to make a parking lot or expand the existing parking lot. We have put that out to bid and received, I believe, six bids back. The low bid was wear excavating for eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. And this resolution authorizes me to negotiate and sign a contract with them to do that work. It's not on the agenda, so it'll require ten votes with only twelve here. So I would appreciate everyone voting to do this, it is in the budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, go, your second, second on Rogers, open for discussion. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Yes. Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
That would be eleven in favor and three absent.
Okay, thank you. So Chief, wear excavating, probably be contacting you about getting that work done. I think from the time we sign the contract, they have thirty days to, to remove the hill. We had about six bids in that and the next one was like a hundred and thirty thousand. So they were all pretty good bids, but this was definitely the lowest one that met all the criteria. The other thing, I'll try to explain hurriedly, but I'll answer any questions that you might have. I'm being asked a lot about the headline last week that the city had turned down the expansion of the homeless shelter, something to that effect. Headline was kind of misleading, but if you read the story, it's fairly accurate. What it amounts to is we have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand each, city, county, and twice we've gone out to bid. This time the bids were a little better, but they're still way over five-hundred thousand dollars. The city's position, and I agree, that was not a good return on the investment. We were going to get, I believe it was eight beds for a little over half a million dollars. And even though we need those beds and we need them now, it just wasn't a good deal. So what the city did is they turned down the bids and they have suggested that we apply for some grants. There's three or four grants that we possibly could get. One, we almost definitely would get for a million dollars. And then there's a couple of five-hundred thousand dollar grants that we can apply for and get and actually build a new shelter as opposed to adding eight beds to the existing shelter. If you read the story, they've got a lot of problems with the existing building and so forth. So it was felt like that it would be a better, if we can get these grants, it would be better to, if we will retain our money in the housing bucket. If you recall back when we first started with the ARP, we did a survey and two of the most needs that came out of that survey was broadband and housing. We've addressed all of the things in the housing bucket except for the homeless shelter. I hate to see it take another year or so to happen, but again, unless we just wanted to fund it out of local taxes, it's about the only way to do it. So they felt like that we had a really good chance of getting these three grants, I think it's three, could be a fourth one. And leaving our money in place to use as the match, city and county. And we could end up with a two-and-a-half million dollar project down the road, a year from now or something like that. So that's why they did not approve the contract. And I'm not asking for any action from you all, I guess I'm asking for inaction. If you will leave the money in the housing bucket so that we still have our match, we'll proceed with the grant applications. That make sense? You got questions? I'll, I could read excerpts. With the letter itself, it says, "The council has chosen to look for a long-term solution on the emergency shelter needs. It's the council and my desire to continue our partnership to develop a plan that will provide more of a long-term solution for the shelter." It'd be a long-term solution as opposed to a Band-Aid, that's what we were really going to be doing. They're just asking that we keep our commitment and the city's in place as it is now, in our case, in the ARP housing bucket. It says, "After research, it was found that there are very good possible funding opportunities to include three or four grants, private donations, and to relocate the shelter and construction of an improved facility. On behalf of the city, I request that we continue our partnership as we develop strategy to provide the much-needed services." So it'll be a better way of addressing the needs, it'll just take longer to do it. Questions?
Commissioner Gilbert and Commissioner Blake.
I think it's a great idea. But one thing, you got winter coming up, is there any way they can put a big tent up over there with heaters in it and some beds and stuff like that? Just to, you got winter coming up.
I don't want to speak for them.
By then anyway.
No, they couldn't now. I don't want to speak for them, I don't know what the possibilities are there. I mean, in the past, they've used a lot of motel rooms too, so, but I don't want to speak for them. It's according what kind of funding come, they're funding mostly from state and federal grants. And if they get the funding, they've gone out and bought rooms when the times were like that, so. But I don't want to speak for what they do there. I think anyone who knows anything about the shelter knows we need a bigger shelter. And the only thing that's really changed is everyone is in agreement that the shelter that we have isn't really fixable. That's not going to address the short term, but hopefully those other options would still be there.
Thank you.
That make sense?
Real quick, Mayor, has any money been spent that we, out of the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand?
Yeah, there has been very little. Two or three or four thousand dollars was spent on engineering work to get to the bid phase, right?
That's kind of.
Yeah. But we wouldn't be adding back to it, we would just be leaving what's left there. I said two-hundred-and-fifty and it's roughly two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, something like that.
So, real quick, you asked for inaction, which I think that's the course of action, but what is, what specifically is the city asking us to do? Are they just?
The other thing, they just want us to leave our commitment in place so that if we get these grants, they and us will have the money to do the matching and so forth on it. So they're not asking us to do anything other than keep the commitment in place.
This is obviously art money and we have a fair amount of time, but we do have a timeline.
And they're aware of that, I discuss that a lot with them. We've met the commitment, so we've met the twenty-four deadline and we've got till the end of twenty-six to spend. If we get the grants approved, the match will come first, so it would be spent, even if the facility's not finished, the match would have been spent. So we, they, we all feel like that, I think there's his art money too. And we all feel like that it will still happen by the time that that deadline comes with art.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else?
If not, I appreciate it. Like I said, it's not the solution I wanted because I think we need it now, but it is really a better long-term solution as opposed to the short-term Band-Aid. So it's hard to argue with that. If, if the bids had come in a lot less than that, it'd have been different, but doing them twice, they weren't going to come in any better. And it's a lot of money to spend to add that few amount of room, so. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the consent agenda. I entertain a motion for Commissioner Alfred, second on Commissioner Goins, open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
That's eleven in favor and three absent.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Beatty, please.
I have nothing to report today from First District.
Commissioner Alfred, please.
Yes, Second District's doing well. I, I would really like to thank the, I may be taking a little Ms. Slater's speech here, but I thank the school board and Ms. Cash for coming the other day to our education committee meeting. It was very, very informative and I hope the rest of the commission will get, get the spreadsheet that they presented and look at the money that we're going to need to eventually come up with in a few years. So I think it would be very, very wise, but I really appreciate them coming because I thought it was the most informative meeting we've had with education in a long time. Thank you.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I agree, it was a very good committee meeting and I appreciate the school board members and Dr. Cash being here. Ms. Chairman, the finance committee voted earlier today to recommend approving project, I'm sorry, public water fund project at Hewitt Street, Southeast Lot Sixteen. Cleveland Utilities will contribute six thousand, five hundred to the thirteen thousand dollar project and two property owners will contribute one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. Finance voted to recommend the county public water fund contribute three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to the project. Our public water fund balance is currently five thousand, so we have the funds. Ms. Chairman, I put this in the form of motion, thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Second on Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
It's eleven in favor and three absent.
Ms. Chairman, the trustee announced last week the office is currently enrolling citizens for the tax relief and tax freeze programs. These two programs assist Bradley County taxpayers to meet the income, that meet the income requirement set by the state of Tennessee and reducing their property tax to freeze their, their taxes. If you feel you may qualify for either the tax relief or the tax freeze program or desire additional information, you may contact the trustee's office at four-two-three-seven-two-eight-seven-two-four-seven. Ms. Chairman, all is good in the Third District, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Yes, I'm sure all of you have seen the pictures from the juvenile. It was a good thing that we didn't have a biggest storm as they had other places. And I went over there and in their conference room, there was water that had been pouring out of the ceiling. And how it got there, because the top part's open, I have no clue. We looked around and the only way I figured it came down through a beam, but I don't know if we got a, when they done the back wall, did they have any kind of arrangement that said that if it flooded again, started leaking again, they would fix it? Or, you know, where they fixed the back wall is leaking too, again. That was the one thing. Then the other thing, I went to the hospital and I met with a young man. And the young man's a veteran and he has terminal cancer. And he's talked to several commissioners, let's try to get him over to the VA and the VA won't accept him. So I was talking to a friend of mine and he's a veteran and he come up with this right here. And it says if a veteran is, is on his deathbed, trying to, truly dying very soon, and the VA won't pay the hospital enough to keep him there. And the state veterans home can't take him because there are regulations and policies on the la, on the level of care that he requires. And our Bradley County-owned facility can provide the care that he is needed. This is, this is, I just can't understand why the VA won't help this young man get over to a county-owned nursing home to help him. And so if there's any way to make a motion, I know the VA, it's a state thing. If they, if Kevin Raper and Dan Howe and Adam could possibly see about getting some funding, that if the VA can't pay for this, that he could go to a county nursing home and let them take care of him. This young man's forty-seven years old, he's laying up there dying. And no, he's got a fifteen-year-old kid here in Bradley County staying with his grandmother. And don't really know what's going to happen to him and his wife's in jail. And it's a horrible situation. And I've done everything I can, me and Commissioner Thompson went to the VA and talked to them and she was very nice to us and she explained to us that they couldn't handle it. But if there's any possible way of getting them to, just if we could write them a letter and say, hey, look, is there any possible way of you getting some funding from the VA to get them in this, in the Bradley County nursing home? Because I promise you, they can take care of them. They took care of me very well.
Are you making a motion that?
I would like to make a motion that we send a letter to our state representatives and state senator that they see somehow if we can't get some money, if the veterans' home cannot take them, that our own Bradley County nursing home can take them.
Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Thompson, open for discussion. Yes.
I, I might be wrong here, but I believe the VA is a federal organization and not a state organization.
It's state.
It's, it's state and I think the county taxpayers is the ones that's paid for this building.
No.
Quite a bit of it, ain't they?
Not, that's not the VA.
No.
The, the nursing home here in town is not the Veterans Affairs. VA, I believe, comes from federal government.
The veterans' home here is a state.
So are you asking us to send a letter requesting for the veterans' home or for Veterans Affairs?
Yes, if the veterans' home can't take it, what money the state would give them? If there was some way that they could allocate the Bradley County Nursing Home to be able to use it? Get this, I mean, it's, it's, it don't happen all the time, but it's going to start happening more often.
I, I just want clarity, if you don't mind, on, on what you're asking. You're asking to send a letter to the state representatives and senators?
To see if they could.
But you've mentioned the VA, but you've also mentioned the veterans' home here. So they're two separate entities. So I'm just trying to figure out, are we sending a letter about the VA federally or the veterans' nursing home, which is a state brand program? Which one are we?
Is the VA?
I think we can combine them all in one letter and ask the elected representatives to try to straighten this disaster out.
I.
Well, I think, would that be, sound all right if we could, they could figure out?
To ask them if they could actually.
I just want to know what the motion is, so I know what we're voting. That's all.
Just to ask them if they could figure out a resolution to get the money from wherever it comes, to get them in the nursing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we're, we're doing this kind of ad hoc a little bit. I know time is of the essence, I'm familiar with this issue as well. But we probably make, need to know, whenever you ask somebody something, you better be very poignant and to the point of what you're asking for. Commissioner Rogers is absolutely right, Bradley County Nursing Home, we're on Peerless Road. It has its policies and stuff like that. The Tennessee Nursing Home, it has pretty much nothing to do with the Veteran, Department of Veterans.
This one here doesn't?
No, the Department of Veterans is a cabinet-level facility, I mean, that's who we had, you get your DD two-fourteen, all that kind of stuff from. So, with Commissioner Rogers, you're asking that the Bradley County Nursing Home take this gentleman in?
The Bradley County Nursing Home would take him.
The Director, Scott Oliver, would be the final decision on that.
I had talked to Scott and he said we could take him.
Then?
But the only reason they can't take him because he makes too much money, he's a hundred percent disabled. And he's making too much money to where he can't get on Medicaid, Medicare.
Can't get on Medicaid.
And the VA won't pay them to watch him, to take care of him.
So your letter is to the Department of Veterans Affairs?
Yes.
Okay. So again, I know time is of the essence, but wouldn't we want to draft that letter, devote on the letter?
If you would work with me, I would love to sit down with you and let you help me word it out.
Wow.
And we'll bring it back.
Absolutely.
So would us bring it back to the next meeting.
But I know that's two weeks before we vote again, but at least we'll have a letter in front of us, Commissioner Gilbert. Because I'm with you.
That'll be fine. It's just upsetting that this young man's sitting up there, he's, it's pitiful. You go up there and see him, you wouldn't like it.
I'm a veteran too.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Okay, there's one thing that we did leave out and I, I was over there too, is that they don't have the people to administer the type of care that he has.
Yeah, he's in bad shape.
Yeah. And that's, that's one of the biggest problems they have at the Veterans Nursing Home. And I don't know what we'll do about that, if they need to hire somebody that will do that or what, but we need to take care of our veterans, I don't care what's wrong with them. And the VA usually does, but if they don't have anybody over to administer the care that he needs, then I can understand why they won't take him over there. But that's something that needs to go up the ladder a little farther and let's get somebody over that can give him care.
We, we've got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If you don't mind me saying real quick, Commissioner Gilbert, I a hundred percent agree with what you're wanting to do. I just want to make sure, like Commissioner Blake said, that we get it to the right people in the right hands and we get this, because I, I'm with you. I, I've made phone calls for this gentleman as well. I think we received, all received a text message from a concerned citizen and phone calls from that concerned citizen about this gentleman. And, and I've made the phone calls too and have tried to help as well. I just want to make sure if we're drafting a letter, that it's getting into the hands of the people who can make those decisions and, and do the right. So I do appreciate what you're doing.
I think we've reached an agreement and the letter will be coordinated with Lori, Malin and Scott Gilbert. We can come up with something for the work session, hopefully. Does that sound all right?
You have a motion, a substitute motion, do you need to withdraw it or do you need a substitute motion?
We need a substitute motion.
Ms. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a substitute motion to delay this until the next voting session. We'll work on this or we'll have a letter to present to the full commission to review at the, what's the next vote work session? October's fourteenth work session. Put that in the form of motion.
Second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
That's eleven in favor, none opposed and three absent.
That it?
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I have a, a couple of things here. You introduced Hunter Shamblin back there a while ago, you forgot to introduce his boss. He works for the state, Gracie.
Gracie, it's a privilege having you here. I, I apologize for what you have to accompany, be accompanied with, but we're glad to have you.
Okay, next thing, Ms. Chairman, is we had a dedication and a rib cutting out at the disc golf, Menace Holler Disc Golf. And I appreciate everybody that was there, we had a good crowd and, and we had a little trouble cutting the ribbon and the scissors weren't too sharp, but we got that all done and I, I appreciate the mayor being there and what he said and the dedication of it. And so everybody go out and play disc golf.
I've got a copy of the banner for you, it's got the article. Forgot to bring it in.
Thank you, I thought I have.
Commissioner Goins, please.
This district's doing well.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As some of my friends have already shared, we did have a very informative education committee meeting last Thursday afternoon. And Dr. Cash shared the vision that she has for the next five and ten years. We reviewed the progress or where they are on the Bradley High School science wing. We also reviewed the plan for the purchase of property that may take place in the next few months so that we have that property when the time comes to build additional schools. We also reviewed their enrollment and we reviewed where they believe the next schools should be built. So if you didn't get to attend that meeting, it would be very informative for you to go back and watch everything that was shared. They did a tremendous job of sharing their, their vision for the next five and ten years. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It was probably the best presentation that I've seen on education since I've been elected. And I, I did thank Dr. Cash today for, for that. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. Six districts doing well, I have nothing to report, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and good evening. I'd like to take a moment to recognize Cleveland and Bradley County Chamber of Commerce President Mike Griffin as well. But I also want to mention him because this past week, the Cleveland and Bradley County Chamber of Commerce held a ribbon cutting at Cleveland Utilities for their new fiber division that got launched. Commissioner Blake was there as well and to celebrate the upcoming launch of fiber internet service in our community. The new service is expected to be available for, for its first customers in the Freewill Road and Candy's Lane area in the coming days with final testing currently underway. For those interested in learning more, pre-registering or finding out when your area will go live, you can visit fiber.clevelandutilities.com for all the details. And I would encourage all the residents that live inside the city and that have Cleveland Utilities to visit that website. Ms. Chairman, I want to take a moment of personal privilege here to express my deepest thanks to several key individuals and organizations that have come together to support our hurricane relief efforts that are going on right now. As many of you know, our community, our company at Wholesale, while headquartered here in Bradley County, it operates in five other states with over thirty locations around the southeast. Some of those locations being Waynesville, North Carolina, Sylvan, North Carolina, Morristown, Tennessee, Sevierville, Tennessee, and Kingsport, Tennessee, all in areas or surrounded by areas that were absolutely devastated by Hurricane Helene. First, I want to recognize Tarver Distributing and Ross Tarver for their tremendous generosity, their connections and donation. their connections and donations of labor and trucks and fuels that helped us secure over sixty pallets of water, which will make a significant difference in those areas affected by the hurricane. They also delivered our first twenty pallets of water to Newport, Tennessee, and Tri, in the Tri-Cities area, along with sending ten pallets of paper towels and toilet paper from Resolute Forest Products. We are so grateful for these combined efforts to give back. I want to give a huge thanks to Commissioner Cindy Slater for her remarkable donation to this project. She literally just called and said, I'm helping you and here you go. You're a tremendous servant leader and I just want to say thank you. I also want to thank the leadership and support of our dedicated legislative partners, Representative Jeremy Faison, the chairman of the Republican Caucus, representative from the eleventh district, the assistant majority leader, Mark Cochran from Athens, Representative Dan Howe, Representative Kevin Raper, Senator Adam Lowe. Your commitment and collaboration have been critical to the success and the efforts in East Tennessee. And I just want to thank them publicly. I also want to extend my thanks to Congressman Chuck Edwards and his office from North Carolina for their assistance in being able to secure resources and ensuring the smooth coordination of relief efforts in Western North Carolina. There are hundreds of people in this community and county that are out working right now, including our Bradley County Fire Department, who just got home, I believe, City of Cleveland as well. From nonprofit organizations to rafting companies, from people and farmers, construction crew like Wright Brothers, who are all out working to help save lives, get roads, electricity, power, internet, utilities restored. It's truly a life altering and, and changes your perspective on just how amazing our county, our town, and the city is and the people in this region are. When disaster strikes, people come together to make a difference. Secondly, in my second job, unfortunately, that I have, I must give a heartfelt thank you to the Cleveland community for your generosity during the WCLE Mix 104 ESPN Cleveland 1013 Hurricane Relief Broadcast with Operation Compassion this past Tuesday. Thanks to the kindness of this community, they raised eighteen pallets of water, sixteen pallets of food, cleaning supplies, diapers, tarps, and other essentials, as well as twenty five thousand dollars in checks and cash for Operation Compassion, who are operating in both of these areas, and that was only in three hours worth of time. Your outpouring support show, your outpouring of support shows the true heart of this community and is a testament what we can achieve when we come together. I just want to say thank you to our community for all your generosity, leadership, and commitment to helping those in need, its partnerships and the strength of this community and, and all communities and organizations around the United States that have lasting impact on East Tennessee and Western North Carolina, two places I have been grateful in my short lifetime to call home. I also want to mention real quick that the little diner on First Street, Cleveland, is holding a, a drop off from seven AM to two PM from October seventh to eleventh, the Cleveland Elks Lodge, from seven to nine. Operation Compassion is still on Urbane Road. Best Buy Metals is collecting toiletries, canned goods, and other non-expired, non-perishable food products at all of their Tennessee and Georgia locations. Wholesale Supply Group is, is collecting cases of water for flood victims in northeast Tennessee and North Carolina at all their locations and the one here on, on Keith Street. Excel Property Management on Edwards Street, the Sandomill Lofts office are taking food items and bottled water, Food City and Publix both are donating as well. And there's a flyer and sheet that I'll give to Lori to be able to pass out to you guys and hopefully we can maybe even put that on our county commission Facebook page as well to let people know. Mr. Chairman, I, all I want to do is just say thank you to the incredible people in our community. Thank you, Chief, for sending your guys from Tri-State Community Aid for what you guys did and for the lives and people that you guys saved up there. So there's a lot of friends and a lot of family members that I have that live up there and coworkers, and they're going through it. And I just want to appreciate this community and all of what they do. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. If there's no unfinished business, I'm not aware of any, we'll move along to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of Commissioner Goins, Commissioner Thompson on this second? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and none opposed, and three absent.
Thank you. Moving along to agenda item A, Commissioner Scott Gilbert.
Motion to submit to Ocoee Utility District a request for the assessment of fire hydrant located at two 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 Georgia Dale Circle Southeast.
Second on Commissioner Thompson, open for discussion? Yes.
Real quick, Chief Stewart, two questions. One, are there any other fire hydrants that need attention? Or is this just the only one of your, the best of your knowledge? I mean, if we're going to ask them to repair, might as well get them all if there's others.
Yeah, there's, there's always a few others. We try to inspect all those hydrants annually or biannually. So each, I mean, there's thousands, thousands of hydrants. We have five utility districts and counties, so there's always something that needs to be maintained.
But the reason why this one's come to our attention is because you try to use it during an incident or a fire and you weren't able to. Right? So with that, is there an actual inspection plan, I guess, for all the hydrant? I know there's lots of them, but two or three hundred a year in over four or five years, you get them all inspected or something? I mean, from what I understand and talking to, to me, is it turned out that this fire hydrant's not being operational, didn't contribute to the, the house being burned down. But, you know, what if kind of stuff goes on? We need to make sure that, in my opinion, that the fire hydrants are operational at all times, when you and your staff, your people need them. That's easy to say, right?
Yeah, I mean, we just, we can, all we can do is report it's not our property, that hydrant, we can't mess with that hydrant or fix that or maintain. We can maintain it as far as inspection and we do flows off of that, which is, we find out the pressures of the water. But we don't actually maintain the maintenance of that hydrant. It's up to the utility district. We just notify them that if there's damage or anything that's wrong with the hydrant.
Mr. Chairman, I believe once the Ocoee Utilities repairs this, they need to let the commission know that that's been done. So that we, we can, so that fire, the chief knows that it's done and if you guys want to go out and inspect or whatever, just thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Chief, do you have a list of fire hydrants that are not properly working, not properly flowing correctly, or anything like that?
Everything's working right now. We have, we do have a list of a few hydrants that are, like I said, we have East Side Utilities, which is in the Lead Mine Weatherly Switch area. We got Charleston. We have Savannah District, which is in Mountain Zion, Old River Road, and we have the Ocoee, which reaches from Upper River all the way down to the Georgia Line. So that one's the whole eastern side and then Cleveland Utilities is the biggest. But we try to maintain those.
And you said, do you, you do have a list, though? Do you have any Ocoee Utility Districts other than this one, that, just this one? Okay. I was going to say, because if you don't, like Commissioner Blake would prefer to attach all of them and let's just get them off.
And they maintain their hydrants very well, it's most part. We have some that's a lot older, but they, they keep maintained for the most part, so. You have a question?
Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and none opposed, and three absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to communication from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes, anyone wishing to speak. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Please, sir. Come right up to the. You're on TV worldwide, sir.
Well, this is exciting indeed.
We'll need your name, please.
My name is Dan Davis. I live in Commissioner Gilbert and Thompson area and came to talk to them tonight about the practices of the Ocoee Utility District, the water charges we got this summer, including the sewer charges, which were about identical to the water charges. So in the month, sometime in August, when we got, after the long dry spell we had, I saw a bill of four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, half of which was sewage. And I live on a ten thousand five hundred foot parcel of land, half of which is a house. I didn't use that much. It, I don't think that their bill reflects reality at all. And I have, my neighbors is here, everyone on our street. And we showed up one of their meetings, which I believe they have on. And it seemed to interest me that we all felt that we were being abused. So I have some representatives here who represent me and I brought it to their attention. Hope that maybe something's done because it's like having a second. You know, it's not, it's not, it's not right. A very simple process, delivering water and, and extracting sewage, and it shouldn't cost me four hundred and ninety dollars that even.
Mr. Chairman, could we send a letter to Ocoee Utility District and send a copy of that bill with it and refer them? And we went to them and they haven't done anything about it, so. I'll make that in form of a motion.
You're going to send a letter to Ocoee Utility District? That's good.
With the copy of his bill?
Yes.
My neighbor points out that I can hand you the original and download a new one for myself. Would you like it right now?
So when you went to see Ocoee Utilities, what did they tell you?
Uh, what's the gentleman's name? Lawson? He's very polite. He spoke about the fact that we were going to see a different set of charges. It wouldn't be a set charge anymore for sewage. But I don't really think he had a lot to say about the fact that we were paying an extraordinary amount of money for water and sewage. Four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. There's two people living in my house, me and my wife. We do water our ground, but it doesn't go into the sewer. It goes flowers and it goes into the grass and the water. And it just does not seem reasonable to have those bills like. Hold on. May I approach the bench? Who wants this? Okay. But I'll read this to you. Water charges, one hundred and eighty-six thirty-five, sewer, one hundred and ninety-three eighty-four. That's a lot of money.
I gotta play.
Have a sip. No, sir. And I, and I'm not allowed to have one by my need. It's. Get away with it. Well, see, we don't have, there's not room for a fall, you know, for a lawn. That's not like you hit my. I've been watching. You've been sending money all sorts of places. Proof you just had one parlock. Yeah.
Yeah, just a, just a process question, since we're out of the voting session, we need to move this to the work session next week and then bring it to the next voting session. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You missed, Chairman. Sir, do you have a, a year's worth of monthly bills? Can we see the persistence? I mean, are we talking four twenty-nine and then? Is that an average? Okay. I would like to see a year's worth, just to see if we're. No, no, we can't do nothing about it. Okay, I, I was just curious. It's fine. Thank you.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah.